Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for September 17th, 2013. We're at the media center of the high school now until further notice, which could be a long time. Tonight, to generate, we have citizens input at seven o'clock and a seven oh five chairman's update. Seven ten PM, Police Chief O'Leary, Fire Chief Hatfield, Stadium Advisory Committee updating on the Country Fest. Seven twenty PM, Board of Selectmen discussion on merit pay plan. Seven thirty PM, Board of Selectmen Town Manager Service Committee funding. Seven forty-five PM, Board of Selectmen Stadium Liquor License discussion. Eight PM, Board of Selectmen discussion on new town manager's goals and objectives. Eight fifteen PM, Special Town Manager Meeting Warrant, Special Town Meeting Warrant. Eight forty-five PM, Board of Selectmen discussion on Plainridge Racino. Nine o'clock PM, Executive Session to conduct strategy session on preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Union negotiation strategies with the fire, void and library, highway and water view of executive session minutes. Okay, John, would you lead us in the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anybody here tonight for citizens input?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Absolutely.
Earlier this afternoon, I had spoken to the town manager about giving you a letter. However, he suggested that I come in person and he'll have a letter that I originally wrote in the folder. We have four members of our reserve police force that are retiring this particular season, and I wanted to acknowledge their efforts, many of them over 20 years, on behalf of the town. So if you bear with me, David Littlefield was a reserve police officer from 1987 until this year, 26 years. Richard W., Richard M. Wright, since 1975. Dick actually was a member of the original civil defense contingent, and I worked with him back in the blizzard of '78 when I was a patrolman, keeping our radio system running. He had 38 years for the community. Richard A. Ludwig started in 1986 as a reserve officer until this year, 27 years. And Louis A. Nelson. Lou came aboard in 2003, so over 10 years of service for the community. Lou had actually worked on a part-time basis as a dispatcher back when we were at the basement of Town Hall for a few years. So I'd like the board, if you could find the effort to send them a letter of thank you, because it's not just working details per se, it was coming out in storms, it was being available during our parades and community celebrations over a long period of years that these people provided service to the community. And I'm hoping that you could recognize the efforts they put into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you could put that.
I'll draft a letter for the board and, you know, I'll circulate it out for you to review and comment.
Thank you. Anybody else for citizens input? Okay, moving along. Edward, you might as well come right back up. We're going to go right by Chairman's Update and Fire Chief Hatfield and George. We got a couple of emails, phone calls, I know I did, I'm sure the rest of the board did, not as many as in the past, looking for, you know, an update on this whole situation with the Country Fest, and that's why we asked you to come forward tonight. So if you could give us your thoughts, we'd appreciate it.
Who wants to go first?
Well, in relation to the call, I just wanted to say that I received the forward of the email. One of them from one of the parties, it was Andrew Prevett on Fort Turner Road. And I called, he was very polite, he was, you know, again, he felt bad, as his email said, but, you know, he basically communicated that because of the traffic coming to a stop, and Fort Turner Road is at the corner of 140 and 115, it's kind of the first house up, and it's kind of set back, so it, you know, and his comment was that, you know, he had to run 50 people off the property, and basically because of the traffic jam, people were looking for a spot to relieve themselves, for lack of a better phrase. And so that was the issue, that one of the issues that got brought forward. From our perspective and the advisory committee, the other things that, we had one call, that person for noise at the concert, it was fairly early, and Inspector Caspar responded to it and let him speak to it, but the music, he called, he went out and investigated and called back, and the music was turned down, and that was, and that was again, early, I believe around six thirty or seven o'clock at night. Those are kind of the things that, two things we ran into, the concert ran a bit late on Saturday evening, ran past 11:15 by about 10 minutes. It was, that was the last night of his event, and he kind of rambled on a bit. Again, that's what our observations were.
Any complaints on the running late from, for noise?
Not from a noise standpoint, not, no.
Any other questions from the board, for George?
Just observation, I guess you thought the event ran better this year than in previous years, the number of protective custodies was down?
Down significantly in terms of the protective custody issue, which has been a driving force of focus for the department. Certainly, there were a variety of factors that I think went into a more successful event this year that was very noticeable. First of all, the weather was a better format in terms of it wasn't as hot and humid as it had been in previous seasons, which meant that people weren't using drinks to cool themselves off with the intensity that we've seen in previous years. There was also a slightly smaller crowd this year, about eight to nine percent fewer fans actually came to the concert as compared to the capacity for the previous two years. We also did, as much as we prepared for other shows, we put even more effort into being set for this particular show, knowing the dynamic that we had experienced in the previous years with the increasing numbers of custodies, but having the resources and the cooperation, not just from Foxborough Fire, stadium security, the state police, we had a contingent of inspectors from the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission come up and work with us in the lots and monitoring activities within the stands, that was very helpful. So it was a variety, and certainly the competence of the police officers that worked the event in terms of keeping things under control so the event went off safely, no significant injuries to fans and/or staff members. And I think, if anything, the traffic situation improved. We did hold the lot until we said we were going to on the Friday show till two o'clock. We were in frequent contact, myself and Lieutenant Stewart, with Walpole, because we realized our partnership with them was critical to having future events, and in talking with their desk staff on both Friday and Saturday, they did not have the significant backups in standstill traffic that they had had the previous two years. There was backup on Saturday in Foxborough along 140, and may relate as people cut across 1A and 115 to come over towards the stadium that impacted Turner Road, so it was not moving. But 140 backed up, but that was an hour and a half after the lot had opened, which meant that traffic had planned to come later, and the greater volume of traffic was trying to get into the lots from three o'clock on, not on the early side. Those were just some of the observations that we had when we were talking about this particular concert afterwards. It is a challenge when we have back-to-back shows, whether it's Taylor Swift or the New England Country Music Fest, just because the cadre of officers that we draw from, although for the special event itself, but the preparation with a small staff that we have to get everything lined up. And again, it goes back to the competence of the people that I work with, that we can pull these things off.
Just an observation, there were three selectmen that came up to, I think, was it the Saturday night?
Saturday night, yeah.
And we were fortunate to be given a tour of the medical facilities, as well as how your officers handle what I would call intoxicated guests, your words.
Right.
The observation was, it's a very well orchestrated, you could actually sense the machinery of the officers working together. And it was fluid, it was professional, and we did get a chance to see the behavior of the fans, and it was more civilized than I thought. It was actually quite well handled. So as feedback from, I think, the rest of us, it was a very professional operation that we saw.
Yeah, my point of view is that pretty much what you heard from Chief O'Leary plays a huge factor. The last three years, we haven't had the humidity, and so that plays a huge factor when dealing with the folks that attend, and, you know, being out in the sun and being in a hot environment and taking part in alcoholic drinks and stuff like that don't play as huge of a factor. Plays a factor in some sense, but it doesn't play as huge. From 2009, the numbers were high, but the last three years, very consistent. We still deal with about 240, 250 medicals, majority of them, more than half, I would speculate, are dealing with Band-Aids for blisters, aspirin, those type of things. Then you have some alcoholic-related scenarios, but the volume, looking at the statistics, very consistent, and it's always what we prepare for. I think Chief O'Leary is correct, you know, prepping our people, planning it, and getting the resources available play a huge factor, but we can't do it without our people being ready, being prepared, and doing the jobs that they're doing. And I feel that it was a good event, and a lot of work, but a good event.
I just want to thank George Bell and Mike Chappa for escorting us through the crowds as we were making our way to find both Chief O'Leary and Chief Hatfield. That was really helpful and so informative to hear input from the Stadium Advisory Committee in addition to your input. Always an education for me every time I go up there, I appreciate that, and really appreciate how well things operate, given what you are dealing with, because even though numbers are less, the intensity of it is still there whenever an incident is happening, and so I think just the way it's orchestrated is really well done. Thank you.
Just two quick questions. It was last year, it might have even been the year before as well, town administrator from Walpole, Michael Boynton, came to our meeting with a couple of his elected officials, and there was some dialogue that there was going to be reach out with, I'm assuming that all happened with the fire chief and the police chief and staffing. We're talking about the local roads up till now, but along Route One up to where the reserve is on Route One, that was their biggest issue coming down. Was there issues on Route One between Foxborough and the state police and the traffic?
Not that I was made aware of. I mean, it was slow traffic coming in at different times, but I know in meetings that we had with stadium staff and Walpole Police in particular, you know, the requests that Chief Stillman had made to the stadium for staffing issues were complied with. And again, having a conversation with him after the show, he did not report any particular incidents that were of grave concern, and again, we, I was myself in contact with his desk to try and monitor the situation of the roadways as the day was evolving, to make sure, because I saw that as a critical component of a successful event, was not having Walpole residents down here with pitchforks and torches to talk about future concerts, and I think we accomplished that component.
Okay, thank you. And the last question, I'm surprised Bobby's saying there was one or two calls, maybe out of both nights, to your advisory committee? Now, if I was a resident, I doubt I would have the number or look in the paper, it's not on my speed dial, I'd probably call the Foxborough Police before I'd think to call the Stadium Advisory Committee. Is that the same for your office, not many calls coming into the police?
Calls may have come in, but none were brought to my attention as being abnormal, and very often what happens if you call the station about a stadium-related issue, that's relayed by telephone up to the red level room, where we've got the integration between fire service, stadium, police services, and state police.
Okay.
So that we can address those issues, whether it was, let's say, a speeding car on a side road because of believing to be people going to the concert or coming from the concert, you know, that's how that would be handled.
Okay, very good, thank you, appreciate it.
Chief O'Leary, when we visited the stadium, we did not go on North Street, and was there an issue at Country Fest with, you know, taxis dropping off, limos dropping off and standing? And also, you had said that you were going to have signs made up as they have in Walpole, no standing or dropping off people during, and I don't remember seeing those signs up yet.
Where they were, was over on the other side between the McDonald's and the Papaginos. We did put up new signs in that area to prevent the taxi cabs from congregating in that particular section under emergency order. I did have the motorcycle patrols monitor the area by the entry point to the terminals, but we didn't have as many cabs as we do for a football game or even parent pickups. I think we had a greater problem with Taylor Swift, even though they had a parent pickup zone and a methodology that people could come back and pick up their children down by the north, excuse me, the south shopping plaza for Taylor Swift, but I think it was more problematic at the home opener last week in terms of the congregation of cabs. So that's an issue that we've got to try and work out.
So those are our signs on the McDonald's side?
Yes.
But we don't have any on North Street?
I didn't have time to put them up on North Street.
But they will be? Because I understand there's a problem there at the corner of North Street.
Right, at the corner of North where the entry point is to the terminals.
Yeah.
We have to, I have to figure a solution to that.
Okay, well, I thought there were going to be signs put up at that area, too.
Still, the volume of people and the traffic that we have after the events there, in fact, the state police specifically don't funnel any cars on, off of Route One onto North in the first hour after an event ends because of the congestion, that would just block up a lane, so everyone has to go north.
Okay, because I, well, I understand there have been limos and on North Street even a few weeks ago, so I thought we were going to put signs on North Street in addition to the signs in McDonald's.
Right, I didn't do that.
Okay, could you do that?
Okay.
All right.
Just one last question. When you mentioned pitchforks, it reminded me of it. I did get a call from some private lot owners who were concerned about the fact that there were cars permitted into certain lots at the stadium to prevent that huge backup before other, so, and they expected that all lots would open at the same time, so I just wanted to put that out there as you go forward with other events, if there's a way to take that into consideration to...
Well, at the pre-meeting, we clearly, we had a pre-meeting, the lot operators, we clearly announced the fact that some people that were coming into the lots were not going to be tailgating, that they were going to be going to the businesses that were at Patriot Place. So people were put in a storage lot, they were told by both stadium security and by my personnel that they couldn't start their tailgate, and those people were directed to go into the stores and restaurants, which they did. We wouldn't allow any tailgating in those areas until we had actually lot opening time. So that was one of the reasons, you know, people coming in, and it's very hard after an event to try and collect money from people that might have been over-beveraged during the day.
When I was with George and we were, George actually has experience with the counting of the cars, and it looked like there was about four or 500 cars there at the time that were related to that difference.
Right, a lot of people had made, you know, we have 3,000 seats in restaurants on Patriot Place, and it was clear that we weren't going to try and interfere with those businesses that were expecting customers.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Well, there's always room for improvement, as we always say in our world. Anything you can say that you'd try and improve on in the future?
I haven't taken a look at it in enough depth, Mr. Sullivan. You know, I always feel lucky that we survive, number one, that we don't lose any officers to significant injuries, and that most of the fans apparently did have a great time. But as we go forward in preparing for the next season, you know, we'll make adjustments to the game plan that we put into place, because small things might have occurred that by changing a practice, we could help mitigate.
If you go back to your rookie years, Chief, back in '78 with the shows up there and the old football games, the last Monday night of all time until what, Belichick came?
Well, you know, certainly the times that we had at the old stadium were much more difficult to police because we lived in a different society. Eighteen-year-old drinking was in place, which was another social problem, so it was much more difficult, no communication. If you can imagine doing a stadium event and you only have three portable radios for the entire policing staff, so just a different time, different anxiety levels about government control and policing.
What has come from that era to where it is now is just a remarkable difference, don't you think?
Oh, it's significantly different.
No, it's 100%.
You know, the professionalism of policing has been significant over the past 35 years and is ongoing.
But I agree that we always have to be proactive in looking at ways to always improve. I think the big improvement this year was getting back a medical facility at the north end zone, brand new. I think that worked outstanding versus what we had last year. But we just always need to be on our game, we have to be looking to be proactive, make sure that our people are ready, make sure that our resources are ready, and continuously have the meetings to make sure that everybody's concerns are addressed. So I think that that's the focus that we have to always put into this event.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wish to be, speak tonight on this? Seeing, any more questions from the board?
Just a special thanks to George, I know you're, sometimes it gets forgotten, but you're a volunteer, and you go to a lot of the committee meetings in preparation, not only the games, but all these events and concerts, so, and I know your committee works hard, but thank you for volunteering.
Great leader.
It's a pleasure. I would just like to comment just a couple of things from our perspective, maybe more porta-potties out in the public area, I'd say, you know, along...
140?
140, 115. I would also advise in terms of potentially new rules for the penalties for being late in terms of the end time. I know that's something that we kind of put into Bon Jovi, you put into Bon Jovi based on the fact that it was, we allowed a later time, you had allowed a later time, and I think that's something that goes in front of the town potentially, or would then be written in. And then my other takeaway is that I'll call a police station and put our name in, so if there are any noise-related calls that we, because that's what we do, we call the stadium and the hotline and say, "Look, when you get a call, relay it to one of us," so I'll do that with the police station, if that's okay.
No, that will be fine, George.
Thank you, though.
Glad to.
Oh, we're talking about the fines for going over town, and we did do it for Bon Jovi, but until we have a regulation that would have to be, would that have to be approved by town meeting?
Generally, that's put into the conditions.
That's what I'm saying, so for that...
That's just, you know, one of the things that we do when they apply for the license, they understand that's going to be a condition of the acceptance of the license.
Okay, have we formalized it yet? Have we come up with a...
I think Bill had worked on some language for the Bon Jovi situation, the other ones had already been licensed.
Right.
So for the next season, that will be in place.
Okay, would that be Bill Caspar doing that?
My understanding is that they just have to go to town meeting.
Yeah. We'll have that in place for the...
Also, I was planning to do that in the spring so we'd be ready for the events in this turn of summer.
So we should have something for the annual?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Edward, if you could stay for one minute, I was going to go to the action module so I can kick you loose, you're making stage for the whole meeting. Number five on the action list is disclosure statement review, operations in Florida reversed by Kraft Group. That's a request for you to go down to...
Split Spill.
Split Spill. It's a facility that Mr. Murphy had approached me ongoing. I did speak with the attorney of the day at the State Ethics Commission, she directed me to certain sections of law that I photocopied to give to the town manager so that the stadium would pay for the expenses of me going down and making an observation of this particular facility.
How's the board feel about that? Anybody have any objections?
Is this something that you've done before?
Oh, yeah. You've gone to many stadiums.
Well, I've gone to different stadiums when we're doing the prep for the new Gillette Stadium.
Oh, sure, but specifically funded by private organizations?
Well, in the past, I've been going through the town manager to the NFL trainers that take place in Florida, and the stadium has always picked up in the NFL the cost of my flight and hotel and meals.
Okay. Board, anything to add?
No, you know, I had tried to call ethics myself, but if you recognize, if you've tried to call before, they will not talk to the person who's not directly involved. So I asked the chief to check into that, he did, and this disclosure is a result of his conversation with the ethics division. So I didn't feel comfortable with him going forward without first getting the, right from the ethics that it was okay to do this, and then also for you to be comfortable that he's doing it, but the benefit that he's getting is for the town and not a direct personal benefit. Just going through the stuff that's listed, and I'm not trying to be too picky, but, you know, obviously airfare and accommodations, breakfast, lunch, but things like special events and entertainment, if we can strike that, it just gets a little too close to something that, you know, special events and entertainment is one thing versus hotel and airfare and bus fare, and it's probably boilerplate language.
Right, I mean, that's a form that was on the event, excuse me, on the ethics page, I, you know, filled in the parts that I felt were pertinent to my duties, and if it's not approved by the board, it's no loss to me.
The, when you go there, you'll be observing exactly that, wouldn't you, like a special event or function at that facility, is that what you'd be more likely to do?
I would like to be able to talk with the management of the facility, get information that might be pertinent to any decision that the board would made, and be able to share that with you. And again, it's the board's... And again, it's the board's decision.
Jim?
I just had a que-- I know Spitsville is, it's basically a bowling alley plus. It's not a Fico's, a Fico's, whatever, which is, which is bowling.
Right.
It's, it's my understanding it's more like, was it Kings and Dedham at Legacy Place? Is that the name of the--
Kings Lane.
Right. There's Kings--
And I mean, is that--
I think it's bigger.
Is it bigger? So I mean, it's like, it's like a bowling alley with entertainment on much, on a much greater scale--
That's what I've been led to believe, that it's significantly a different operation than Kings.
So it's significantly different from Kings and anything else around here?
Function hall. They have private function hall--
So it's supposedly very unique. I've never been to the one down in Florida and probably won't be going if you don't want me to go.
Sounds like you don't want to go.
I actually think there's a lot of value because there's going to, this could potentially have a significant impact on your operations on an ongoing basis. So I think it's beneficial to go observe, bring back information to the boards. We can make an assessment on how this would fit into the town.
Okay. Well, again, your decision.
I mean, at first, at first, I thought it might make some sense for us to hear more about this proposal before you were dispatched to observe it. I don't know if you want to wait until we get a formal proposal about this so we can actually know more about it.
The concern I have for that is, you know, once an application comes in, you have a specific period of time in which to make a decision. And I think you'd like to have the chief's input long before you have to make that decision. So if you, if he doesn't go until two, three weeks into the process, it may run into, you know, the backend of your timeframe.
You're having a bunch of home games, you know, for football. So I think Bob and John are very correct. Does anybody object to this?
To Ed's trip?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to that effect?
I would think it's an action item, yeah.
Okay. I move that we approve the chief's trip to Florida to observe the Spitsville operation. I don't know the date.
It's actually Strixville.
Well, it's Spitsville. He has Strixville in here, but it's called Spitsville, so.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the date, Chief?
I don't even have a date.
Okay. The date is to be determined in the near future.
I wanted to get approval before I made any commitment to the stadium.
Got a motion from John. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye, tie zero. Good luck.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Discussion on merit pay again. Bob, this is the third time we've had this. Is there a reason why?
Well, this is not, this is, this is new, and I'd ask Cindy to come up to assist in the discussion. But this is on the actual merit pay going forward.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
That other portion's already been resolved, and we're working on completing that. Going forward, just for little history, and then we can get into the discussion. As you recall, just over a year ago, there was a new wage plan went into effect with new steps. And at that time, it was rolled out to the department heads with a one-day, you know, kind of take it or leave it approach. And the majority went along with the plan. And then at that time, Mr. Pecos indicated that there would be a form of merit involved. But I think the understanding for most of the people was that it was still going to involve this pay plan, which, if you think about it, kind of makes sense. Because why are you voting for a new pay plan with steps if you're going to a complete merit system? You know, it wouldn't make sense in that framework, at least in my mind. But going forward from there, we started the process of rolling out a merit system. One did not exist at the time. Everybody knows that. We had a committee that was formed of four or five individuals from town. And then when Cindy was hired last November, she came in and started chairing that. She got the forms into place and started to roll them out with department heads. And there was a little bit of pushback. And then she was going to involve Kevin in the process at that time. And that was right around when he went onto military leave. And it's been sitting there since. So as I indicated to you, we would start to roll it out again. We did. There were some minor adjustments to forms, but everything else was in place. We rolled that out again last week at the department head meeting. And again, there was some pushback. And I think the reason for that is this, this idea that we still have, if you look at the personnel bylaw, there is a, and that's what a lot of people, for the years, that's what they've been relying on. The personnel bylaw talks about anything to do with benefits and things like that, pay. And it still has this structured setup with the steps and all of that. So they're, they're trying to correlate in their mind how we have steps. Do we have steps in a merit pay? And how does that work? So it's, I think it's just, it's a work, as I explained to them, it's a work in progress. And I think we just need a little bit of direction from the board, actually where you see it going. Do we still have a step plan? Because eventually, if there isn't going to be a step plan, we need to take that out of the personnel bylaw and make it the complete merit system. Does that make sense, Cindy?
Yeah, I think that this new pay plan came out and really should have been in conjunction with merit, but it got rolled out first with merit to be introduced. And I think steps is confusing when you're talking about merit. And merit could be less than an entire step. So it may make sense to change that to bands, min, max. And it's a band in between, or keep a step range where you hire somebody at a step, but the salary is still banded. So it's, it'll be, there'll be a cap on it. So people can't go beyond what would be considered a traditional step 10. But that way, the merit system could be introduced, and it may help with some of the confusion.
When Cindy rolled it out, she did roll it out with personnel wage. They've had a chance to review the, the forms and all of that. I think that they were on board. Gary, do you agree with that?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So they're, they're on board with that. We started rolling out with department head, and then we're going to roll out with employees. We saw the amount of pushback, which was similar to the May timeframe when we had the meeting with department heads. And so we're just looking for a little bit of direction from you. Are you all of the mind that we continue to go with a merit? Is it going to be completely merit? And are we going to be getting away from the step basis? We do need, you know, some form of a step when, when you hire somebody, you know, but--
I get to, John, you go first.
Yeah. You know, what, what this whole plan was intended to be was a move from traditional public sector compensation plans to a, almost a hybrid, moving closer to the private sector compensation plans. And, you know, I know that it's flawed. There are some things about it that you've got to shake your head in question, one of which is, you know, if it's a merit, totally merit-based plan, the concept of COLA doesn't exist in that. And I understand this still has it. Honestly, I think it needs a fresh set of eyes and a fresh review. Because as it stands now, I still think it has fundamental flaws in it. And I think if it's, it's not quite understood by the folks who it's going to affect, I just, I see, you know, some, some anxiety coming from it. So I think it's, before we get too deep into the fall, if we can get together and say, what really do we have in front of us? What are we trying to implement? Because the last time we rolled it out, there was just a tremendous amount of anxiety and misunderstanding. And I think if we, if we're going to implement it and make a wholesale change, it would be good to at least collectively understand it and, and be able to support it.
Ginny?
A few months ago, I happened to be speaking to a select, select person from the town of Easton on, on another matter. And in the conversation, at the end of the conversation, she asked me, "By the way, do you people have a merit plan program?" And I said, "Yes." And she said, "Is it's..." It was, she said, "Is it the one that Kevin Pecos introduced to the town?" Because that was the same program that was introduced to the town of Easton. And that had been like about 15 years ago. And she said that that, actually, that evening, there was going to be a warrant article at the annual town meeting, completely redoing the merit plan system. Because it had gotten, in her words, "completely out of control." So what I'd like to see, if you're going to be investigating this, I would like to see maybe if you could go to the town of Easton, talk to these people, see the new warrant article, and find out what were the problems that they came up with, why they felt they had to completely rewrite the whole program. And so maybe we can avoid the problems that another town with a similar system had. So that's what I'd like to see.
Thank you. All right.
I agree with John and Ginny. Actually, you know, I, you obviously have to have the steps to hire someone in at a certain--
Yeah.
--spot. But just a couple of additional observations. As I've been thinking about it and hearing about the pushback, you know, I think I would envision a merit system typically is, relates to management performance and not staff performance. So perhaps you, seeing what Easton has, you know, developed, could be interesting to see how they approach that. I think that having goals and objectives for management lends to a full merit system. Looking at steps, I thought that the steps went into place so that, again, there could be a more gradual travel along that range over the timeframe that the employees are here. So I guess I would be curious, again, to recheck where our steps are related to steps of other union employees and see how they compare in a step-wise fashion. Because typically, if you're in a mixed environment, you're, you negotiate your contracts, and then you're looking at having some similar type of result for your non-union, non-management employees. Management is a different story. You go, you're doing the same budget process. Say, if you end up with an overall increase of 3% for union employees, for whatever they're getting, then from a merit perspective, you'd end up with an average of 3%. So someone who exceeds standards could get a 4, someone who doesn't could get a 1 or 2, you know. So that's how you balance that. That's, I'd like to see how Easton compares to that, and maybe a couple of other big towns, too.
James?
Yeah, I'm wondering if this is the case, or we're trying to fit a round peg in a square hole. We're taking a private way of doing business and putting it into one of the sectors of the town. And I, you know, it did come quick. But when I saw that, you know, it's a step plus the merit. And, you know, it's easy to say Kevin, you know, was out of commission in the last couple of months. But, you know, the work getting up to the December vote, plus the January, February, March, April, May with a HR director. And I just have not heard any good things about the process and the understanding and getting to the end. And we basically settled to give everything, everybody the same, which I think was not the right thing to do for a lot of people. But collectively, it was the only thing that we could do. But to go back and try to fix it, I think it's just too broken to fix right now, especially where we're trying to get a town manager. I'd be all for scrapping the merit process and going back to the steps, just like the majority of the other towns do, where you have some type of, a little easier to plan, a little easier to, to work through that process. Here, you know, the town manager, it is somewhat of a political position, as you've seen, some last a year, some last 20 years. We were lucky to have Andy last for so long. But I don't want to put this into a system where we could be revisiting it every couple of years based on how a town manager runs the process. You know, it's town manager, HR, department heads and staff, and it all depends on that one position. And I don't know if I want to put my eggs in that basket again right now. So having said that, I don't know where that leaves us with the bylaw and where we are right now to the next town meeting.
John?
Yeah, Jim, I agree with most of that. But I think the spirit of this program was to reward employees that were producing and to hold and maybe slow down the, the progression of employees that weren't. And that's part of the program. That's part of the program that I see has value.
I agree with some of everybody's saying tonight. I interrupt you only because I also think it held back other employees from getting compensated.
Possibly.
And I think the whole thing's been flawed since the beginning. I voted against it from day one because I didn't understand it back then. And I'll be honest with you, I still don't understand it. It's been, it was presented as a bad plan. It wasn't, I mean, well-planned when it was presented. It was forced down the employees' throats, is the way I'm going to say it. Because I got more complaints from, you know, employees of the town that had involved saying, "Good luck to you. You're never going to see another raise again," by people that were above them, and saying, "You're all done. Good luck ever getting any more money." You're all, you know, all kinds of stuff. So I want to scrap it. Cindy?
Mm-hmm.
Find the correct way to do it, bring it back to the board, and let's start all over again. That would be my directive. Because--
No argument with that.
This thing has been a mess since day one. And as far as just department heads getting significant, you know, I'll call this merit thing a bonus, you know, in my, my field, when I get a bonus from, and it happens now and then, you get a bonus from a happy customer, I'd share it with the employees. Because they were part of the process, too. You know? I mean, Bill Belichick ain't Bill Belichick without Tom Brady or his other coaches or Robert Kraft. It's all a group effort. So if you're going to keep everybody together and happy, it needs to be fair for everybody, not just for department heads, not just for individual employees. But this thing has been a disaster.
Mark, do you favor at least investigating the--
Absolutely. I say move forward, scrap, I say we vote to scrap this whole merit pay thing right now. Have Cindy and Bob at this time period and the wage committee, start with Cindy, find a way to doing this the right way, get off on a level--
But we're going to have to have a plan in place by late winter so that reviews can take place, if reviews are going to be part of it.
Well, you know, I don't know that you actually do because even under the step process, in order to get awarded a step, you need to establish that you've met certain --
Right.
--goals and criteria, goals and objectives. So I'm going to task the, I already have tasked the department heads to get their goals and objectives going. We will continue on that process. And I think we should at least have a review process which does not necessarily need to involve a merit pay plan. But in order for them to get any kind of a step, I think they still need to establish certain minimum criteria.
Correct.
I mean, prior to that whole conversation about merit, it was proposed that we do a bonus situation for when people come in or have, show great savings to the community or the department, that they get a bonus. You know, I mean, I want to compensate our employees, but I want to do it fair and equitably.
And I agree.
And it's got to be budgeted, too. It can't be something that's just like completely like, saying Halloween here.
Right. So-- Many of the staff are in jobs that are the same every day. There's no, you know, there's no educational opportunities. There's no way to really jump ahead. So how do you, how do you fairly judge them on criteria that doesn't exist for them? You know what I mean?
Right.
And I will tell you that the frustration is not with the merit process that we created. It goes back to their understanding of the pay plan. They're content with the forms, content with the things that we brought forward to them. It's their whole understanding of when the pay plan was introduced. So the frustration is with merit, but it's really because of what they understood or thought they were getting, and then this piece came. So I think it's, it is a good idea to sort of start over. I mean, we may utilize pieces of it, but I do think it's the wisest thing to do is to come up with a plan in its entirety, including if it's going to be merit, the pay plan, what is merit, in its entirety as a package, not pieces of it, the cart before the horse, things like that. It needs to be all of it. Because the frustration-- the cart before the horse, things like that. It needs to be all of it. Because the frustration comes from, it's what they thought they were buying and not
Yeah, but it's, I'm not sure if that's entirely true. There are some staff members that went through, spent a lot of times on the goals and objectives, submitted it.
Yep.
And then it kind of ended there. They didn't get the feedback, they didn't get the next step. So, you know, you bring this system, you do it, and then you wait.
Right.
So that could be, people do understand it. And then they put their trust in the system and the system never got back to them. So I think more people understood it than you may imagine.
Yeah, the feedback that we got in department head from the majority is that this isn't what they thought they were getting. So, and I do agree, I think that
Is that because of the one and a quarter split amongst everybody, or is that
No, that's some of it, but that's not, people agreed that there had to be something.
So the board should, I would like to hear a motion to
Could you look into Easton in fact, because
Oh, that's absolutely part of it.
They had the same problems. And also, what does this, what does this do with the status of the personal wage bylaw that was supposed to be revised?
That's part of the problem. It's just, you know, there are many of the things that Cindy has been working on and will continue to work on with the personnel board. There are many things in the bylaw because of changes in legislation and we're just not keeping up with some of that. She knows those and has already worked on those. And there's other ones, I know you're concerned about the educational piece of it. All of that will be looked at and will be run by personnel board, employees, and then be ready for the next town meeting.
Right.
The annual.
The annual.
Yeah. I've already made, I think many of you may have seen my binder with twenty red flags on it. I did speak with Gary and told him I'm going to email him my, I tracked all the changes that I'm recommending and send it to Gary, then we're gonna sit with personal wage. Department heads, see what departments have to say, go from there, get the feedback, come up with the plan, roll out what we're hoping to make as changes, get the feedback from the employees. They really want to be engaged and they've been asking and giving feedback on some of the things that they would like to see, things like that. So there, it's a large project as far as the number of changes that really need to happen. So this sort of needs to get done so it can be included, because that piece needs to change and this has to happen first before that can happen.
So the personal wage bylaw will include this merit plan, that'll be
Oh, yes.
That'll be part, that's part of this.
Yes, it has to be, yeah. I mean, or logically it would be, yeah.
So, but at this point, do we want to vote?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay, please.
I'll move that the board selectmen place a moratorium on the present merit pay plan while our HR director researches and proposes an alternative pay plan for approval by the next annual town meeting or at the next annual town meeting.
Second.
Discussion?
Perhaps we could get feedback on it within, say, three months or so, so that we
You know, it would have to, because if it languishes on, then you're at a crunch, and then the product that you create is substandard.
Right.
So we would have to, we would have to really get at it this fall.
Right.
Absolutely. I agree.
All said.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna pass this to Lorraine because she's spearheading this. This is for the town manager search committee funding.
Yes, we have in our packet, it's a request for transfer from the reserve fund that I'd like to submit to the advisory committee. This is to engage the services of the Collins Institute. Richard Kobayashi, who presented last week to us, has offered us an agreement for fourteen thousand dollars. There are other incidental expenses which are not included in this request, but I have reviewed the budget with Randy and there is the ability within the existing budget to cover any incidentals such as when we get down to perhaps the two, last two finalists, there would be background checks that would cost three hundred fifty dollars each. So those incidentals will be covered. So the amount requested is fourteen thousand dollars. And I think probably the first question to ask is, would the board be open to us engaging the Collins Institute to run this search for us? As step one, before we even ask about this.
Okay, well, go ahead, Jim.
Strangely enough, this afternoon and this morning, I talked to James Bonazzoli. He's a selectman from the town of Reading and he used the Collins Institute last year to, as part of this search. I asked him a number of questions, which followed more or less the questioning that we had for Dick the other night. And strangely enough, the search committee in the town of Reading had in mind that they would like to include candidates from the private sector. Their thinking was consistent with some of ours. And Mr. Kobayashi said, you know, we really don't do that. And that was disappointing to me. I was hoping to say that they would try to include a mix of people from a lot of different backgrounds. During the interview process, where he was interviewing the selectmen to try to get their read on the direction of the town, the type of individual that would work well with, you know, the employees and management of the town. James Bonazzoli got the impression that Dick really wasn't listening to him. And that, that he was going down the road to say, well, you know, all towns are just the same. The town manager in this town is the same as the town manager in that town. So I went, wow, I expected you to have glowing information on this outfit. And unfortunately, it was neutral to poor. They still use them. Strangely enough, they didn't take a candidate from the pool that they presented, they went with an internal candidate. Still paying them the fee. But anyway, I just wanted to pass that on to the board. I don't know if anyone else did any research. Did you?
Yeah, I spoke to the reference from Burlington and also the reference from Hanover. And I actually did get glowing recommendations from them. They thought that the process was well-run, it was very timely. Burlington took three months to accomplish it. They had about twenty-five resumes brought forward to their screening committee. And then that screening committee narrowed it down to twelve with, you know, working with Richard and his associate. And then they brought forward three very experienced candidates and had, are happy with the outcome. This was two years ago. Hanover, they brought forward three thirty-year town managers with a lot of experience also. And they were happy with the selection. Now they're having some political changes, so perhaps that could change. But they were, you know, initially very pleased with, with their selection and with how the process went. So you know, I felt comfortable after speaking to the two of them that this was gonna be a solid approach, basically.
The only good side of this is you don't have to go through the bid process. The downside is that I'm afraid we're just gonna have the musical chairs of town managers moving from one town to another. We're gonna get the next in line.
I think that's something we could talk with Richard more
A much more diverse pool with folks from different backgrounds.
Well, if we engage the Collins Institute, can't we give them the direction that we want to open it up?
But the town of Reading did exactly that and didn't get that product. And that was his major source of disappointment. And while he said, you know, the process went smoothly, they, they went through it. He was disappointed that all they got to look at was established career town managers. And I made that point the other night as I was looking to sort of break away, not that it's a cartel of town managers, but just to get a fresh look at town governance.
James, you got?
Yeah, I mean, I checked references. I actually, I thought we were gonna vote on this at the last meeting, so I did reach out. And they were all positive recommendations. And there were some towns that actually used them for more than one. It was repetitive for different. It seemed like there was a mass exodus of that town. I didn't ask about the private, and I see your point, it would be nice to get a fresh perspective on it. You know, in Framingham, there was a competitor, ended up picking this institute over another one. The other one was a little cheaper. But I don't know, I think what Ginny's recommending is if we put it in the proposal, the scope itself, that said the wording and the language will go towards the private and the public as the initial charge. My big concern is we've got a hundred and eighty days to do this from when you were first appointed, because that time doesn't go away. I didn't have enough anxiety from this institute to say, let's go out and do another search. I thought they were very good with what I saw. A couple quirky things we could probably address during the process. But with a hundred and eighty days to go out for bid, which is gonna take another month to advertise, get it back in, we're gonna be, we don't have much of a choice when a hundred and eighty days comes. So you know, I don't think there's a big risk using these if we push, if the
But my point is, we're gonna have to manage the process because they're somewhat fixated on their process.
They've got a little bit of a boil.
And one complaint was they're gonna try to overlay that process onto us and say, this is the best way to go. You know, I have my own thoughts about how to recruit professionals and if they tried it and they, I don't know how hard they pushed, but if they tried it and didn't get the product that they were looking for, and that's my concern, is that we're gonna get a cookie cutter process.
I mean, I think he also talked about how there could be certain situations like a, say, a long-term selectman with some professional background that could potentially make that transition smoothly, but I think it's kind of hard again, to transition from the private sector to the public sector.
There are challenges, there's no doubt. It's a cultural minefield. But it's just that, you know, it's the, it's the culture of town managers that we ever gonna break away from that. And that's all I'm looking for is a somewhat of a different perspective in town governance.
And I agree with John that I would like to see something of a different flavor come into town than the same old, same old, because as talking with James at the last process, while I wasn't on the board, it came down to Kevin and a couple other candidates and the committees suggested that he was the standout candidate, if I'm correct, at that time, or is that what happened? And it came down between Randy and then Kevin. And then I asked, well, you know, why didn't you just go back out to bid with it? And he said, we didn't have the time.
That would have been, I think that would have been the third time, then.
Yeah, so in the process, now you're going through the whole process again. So you come up, what if that happens this time? We come through this whole process, we've dumped fourteen grand plus expenses or whatever it comes to. And we come down to the same old, here's two candidates and we don't want either one of them. Because we didn't go out beyond that pool of the, you know, the normality of town managers. I mean, there's a lot of good professionals out there that could adopt into this, no problem.
The last process was really flawed, though. You know, I was one of the board members involved in flawing it from the beginning. And, you know, I think that really impacted the quality of applicants that came, that ultimately came forward because, you know, there was an internal candidate and they had no guarantees about what was gonna happen. And so I think it would have made sense just to do it again and bite the bullet and do it again at the time. But, you know, learning from that, I think hopefully now we have a clean process that we can attract really the top-notch experienced town managers who are out there in addition to an attempt to try and find someone who might be comparable somehow in the ability to, you know, transfer over. But I think we stand a better chance now because that last process was very flawed.
Also, the having department heads and committees that are gonna be hiring their bosses, not a good idea. That just didn't make any sense to me at all. Like I said, I was
Quick to go wrong with that, Mark.
Well, you know.
So John, you think, you know, the one option, we've got a group in front of us that has good reputation and credentials, other than the private sector, they just don't have that outreach. Do you think with a little bit of work on our side?
Your point about timing is valid. I mean, we're, if we go any further, we're gonna wind up with a marathon and that won't create a good result. All I'm saying is that if we do go with Collins, we can't sit back and let them manage the process for us. As much as you'd like them to, we're paying them to do it, we really have to be involved. And I think we have to be on point as to, you know, where we really see the town twenty years from now. And can we match up sort of our conversation with Dick and say, this is where we're gonna be, please find us a person that can get us there.
Well, and I'm not disagreeing, but we're five people, okay? But part of this process, there's gonna be a committee. And there's also gonna be, you know, in our packet, a list of people that we would put out there that this organization would call. So there'd be twenty people that they're gonna reach out to, plus bring it back to a committee. They're gonna do all that work and then sort it out to us. For us five to say, this is the way we think the town is going, it may be valid in our minds, but to get a larger group that the Collins Institute will interview, I think is more important. But what I was gonna start saying was, I think it would be more work for us, so we're not just following like sheep to this group that comes in.
That's the point I'm trying to make, is if we're not involved, we will be like sheep and we'll get, you know, a cookie cutter product.
I just asked Larry from AdCom to come forward. As we're gonna go through this process, we're gonna put together, Lorraine's been working really hard on this. There's gonna be a list of people for the Collins where to talk to as far as interview, somebody from AdCom, department heads, all kinds of other people, compile on a list of people that Lorraine is, she's gonna present this in a minute. And then we're gonna compile a list of people that we think should be on the final review committee. With the process we're talking about right now, can you give me your feelings on this?
Regarding
Regarding
Funding. Reserve fund transfer?
No, not just the funding, how you think this process should go. As far as finding a new town manager, do you agree with
Yeah, I haven't thought about it, obviously as deeply as the board has. I mean, I, I mean, I, I like John's idea, or not John's idea, I mean, everybody's idea about looking outside the kind of typical pool of people. I don't think you'll have the same problem that you had last time that Lorraine alluded to, because I think this is a great job for someone and there's no one in it right now, no one who wants the position. So, you know, the field is wide open for people to, you know, if you feel like you're the best candidate, you don't feel like there's someone who has an inside track to it. So I think you'll get some really good candidates. That's, that's my feeling.
So
This is, I think this is, if you're a town manager by profession, this has gotta be one of the top places that you'd look to because of it, you know, it has a wide variety of things that go on here.
So you would, you would think that the Collins Institute with some caveats, from John, like I say, I agree with John saying, you know what, we want to look outside the box. We say, we want at least, if you bring twenty-five candidates, we want at least five from outside the box that haven't been municipality managers before. You think that's a good way to go?
Yeah, so let me, I'll speak as a private citizen.
That's what I'm at.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I think, I think it is. As long as, I think I would probe a little bit and make sure that they're comfortable recruiting people who are outside the, the kind of tight-knit community of existing town managers. You know, it is, the guy who was here, Kobayashi, was that his name? He, I don't, he never came right out and said they were, they had no experience with finding
He dodged it a bit.
Dodged a bit, yeah. And the fact that you found someone who said that they, said we don't do that, that's, that's a little bit worrisome. But so I would just ask them about that and make sure that they're comfortable recruiting from a wide pool of candidates, people who are existing town managers and people in the private sector who are interested in that position.
And the checks and balances we have in place, the committee that we will pick at a later date to
To do that screening.
Bring their last, you know, seven, let's say they bring in seven candidates, they screen them and then they present to the board. So is that something you'd be interested, anybody on AdCom being part of that?
We can't, we're not, we're just not allowed to do that.
And they can't be in any other committee.
Right. Other than, it's true, a committee that's voted on at town meeting, we can't be on any.
So nobody can, AdCom can be on?
Probably in terms of interviewing, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if it's an open meeting, we can certainly sit in on it.
The interviews wouldn't be, the interviews would not be open. But
Right, right, they can't be.
In terms of actual startup process, as they're getting ready to prepare, you know, the production here, they would interview many different people. And it makes total sense to have someone interviewed from the advisory committee.
Or a person comes to, the person comes to the AdCom meeting and listens to us for half an hour. for half an hour, you know, about our experiences with town managers and...
Why don't you go right into that now, Lorraine, what we're talking about with this list, because that kind of has a bearing on this whole discussion and decision we're going to make here, because that is part of the whole thing.
Part of the process of developing the marketing tool involves interviewing many people from the town. So, for example, I'm asking for input from board members as to community leaders who they think it would make sense to have interviewed by Kobayashi and his associate. Suggestions such as all elected board chairs be interviewed, attending an advisory committee meeting would be great, because they need to get a real flavor of the community and what people want. And, you know, again, the hope is with their knowledge of the people out there that it starts to click with them, who's going to fit this and who, Bill, and who isn't. And so, working with them and working as a board, we would develop this suggested list and see if, and he has said to me in discussion that, you know, depending on the information that comes out, they sometimes recommend either even more outreach to get more input. So that's where I think they would be helpful to us, you know, if they feel that they don't have the right flavor yet of the town. The other part of the process is for us to recommend a screening committee, a group of people who, once the marketing takes place and they have all the results back, that they do the first weed through of all the resumes. Say if they got 50 resumes, we would identify a group of people on the screening committee, volunteers. And part of what they will help us do is develop the charge for that screening committee, exactly what the expectation is for them to do. So once that's clear, they get to work, work through whatever the process becomes, and bring forward candidates. If it's not good, I think we would all agree, we would rather start all over again than settle, because this is too important, this is the most important decision we make.
What's, what happens if in January you don't have a person? Does, do you have to appoint a different interim person or...
That I don't know.
Find or what happens? No one knows.
We've never been that far before, so...
I think we have to come to the advisory committee and beg for forgiveness.
Maybe you can get an extension.
Continuum resolution or something.
I think if whoever's out, you know, like hopefully the town would see that we were trying our best to address the problem and let us continue. But, so to come up with this search committee, I'm suggesting that we go through a process that all of us provide our thoughts on who might be individuals who could work on this committee, and that we go through a ranking process similar to the goals and objectives where, you know, we list them all, everybody gets a copy of the spreadsheet, we rank in order what we think is of most importance, and then we can tally that and come up with whatever we decide is the size of the committee, whether it's going to be potentially five regulars, two alternates, so the top seven numbers calculated would be those individuals. And, you know, I think that that's a fair process. I know we have actually received examples from other towns where, for example, there's always somebody from the finance committee on it, there's always the school committee, or each selectman puts their own into the mix. And, you know, I just think that we'd get a broader perspective if we can all see what each other have on our minds, and then we can prioritize them in that way and then produce that result.
Right.
So that's what I'm hoping, we'll start the process. And again, I was encouraged by the timeline report of the Burlington situation and actually Hanover, too, they moved pretty quickly. But Burlington was very pleased with a 90-day situation, and a big town, you know, lots of industry there, lots of development, so.
Yeah. Not to kind of throw a negative in, but the reserve fund transfer is a bit worrisome in that we are, we will have spent down most of the reserve fund if we do this and the town manager's salary. This early in the year, that's, that's worrisome.
I, you know, I was present for the discussions that you're having and, you know, I think it'll be interesting to hear more discussion on that. This I'd ask again tomorrow night, you know, when we discuss it with advisory committee.
Is this on our agenda?
There is a reserve fund transfer item.
So this will be...
Generic enough.
Yeah, this will be in it, that this be considered as, this is really the thing that we need to get us, you know, to pull the trigger.
Yep.
And it's so important, you know, so we'll talk about it.
So if all goes well, are you going to vote on the, we can't vote on the Collins Institute till we have the money?
We could vote to engage them, subject to, number one, I can confirm the willingness to talk, as we're interviewed, to be open to...
Outside the...
Outside the box as part of the process and subject to funding.
Randy, do you want to speak? Please, it's a little different being in this arena.
Just got back from open house at the Hearn.
I couldn't go.
Two comments, one is on the draining of the meager reserve fund at this stage of the game. That was the, one of the reasons why we have that year-end transfer law that was passed several years ago, which allows flexibility within the non-school budget. So that's actually one of the reasons why we've reduced the reserve fund to the level that it's at. So the fact that, you know, we're requesting the amounts that we are at this point in time doesn't concern me, because I'm suspecting that with that flexibility at year-end, that we should be able to handle any other challenges that may come our way. What's the last point that you just made?
Did I just make? Oh, subject to the...
Right. So, you know, there are some choices that the town manager can make here, looking at the, you know, the administration budget, there are some items there in the administration budget, he could make some calls as to whether or not, you know, he intends to use, you know, those funds for the particular line items within the budget, they were only voted as one line as expense. So there is some flexibility there to get you, get you off the ground, but, you know, if there is a need for that expense to use those funds that are in that budget for the many line items there, then ultimately we need a reserve fund transfer. Just want to let you know, you have some flexibility.
And so that's the other option.
Yep.
Okay.
So I'd be inclined to go forward this with the perspective that the board would want to look outside the box with...
Yeah, I mean, as Jim's point was that, you know, we don't have infinite time. I can, I can see it, I just wanted to pass along some observations from the town of Reading, and that we have, we will have to be engaged in managing the process. With that, I think it's okay. One other comment was that Dick was a bit laid back for this guy's taste, again, it's our process to manage.
Right.
Okay, so I think, Lorraine, you just about had a motion on the tip of your tongue there when it said about look outside the box.
Motion to approve entering into an agreement with the Collins Institute for the amount of $14,000 with the caveat that I will contact them and they will agree to look at other private sector candidates, get, you know, help us obtain other private sector candidates, and also...
Approval of the transfer.
Subject, subject to funding, subject to funding, because if the transfer is not approved, we'll have to do something.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Under discussion. That, there was a proposal that was sent around, that was 14, but it also had on top of that incidental expenses. So we're asking for 14, we just made a vote for 14, but if it goes over that, I think the motion should be amended 14, or I think just to reference the proposal that they sent us.
So, okay, so for $14,000 plus incidental expenses?
As outlined in their proposal.
Do you have that, Diane?
Oh, plus incidental.
Do you want to read it back or...
So approve the agreement with Collins Institute, an amount of $14,000 plus incidental expenses with the caveat that they agree to obtain private sector candidates and subject to funding.
Very good. Okay, any more discussion? All of us in favor?
Right.
Okay, thank you. All right, Lorraine, before we move on, now we should have more discussion on this, correct?
No, I think I need to get feedback from everyone. If everyone could email me a list of all of the names that you would like to have considered, I can compile it onto a spreadsheet, and then you can rank them, and I'll compile the totals, and we can bring them forward for public discussion.
And one list is for interviews, interviews by consultants of the board, like...
Make a list of interviews.
Somebody to add to this general list. This list doesn't mean anything other than we're throwing names out there that would normally be there, and then, I mean, some of these people don't even know they're on this list.
Right, and, you know, especially any thoughts you have for community members, you know, to include community members in the interview process to...
And the second list would be for people that would be on the actual committee.
Right.
So, and then we'll rank them after they're all set in at our next meeting, Bob, if we could have this on the agenda, the same agenda item, town manager search, wouldn't be funding, or would be, because we'd have to, if the funding gets approved, would that be adequate, or should we say...
Just town manager search committee.
Okay, yeah, okay.
When I, when I contact Dick to talk about what we just mentioned, I'll ask him in terms of timing, you know, when should we start this process? Is it something that he would come here and help us with, or, you know, how would that work too? So I'll talk with him a little bit more about that.
Okay.
Am I supposed to sign this, Bob?
Right there, yep. Right there. Department head, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, great, and then moving on to state and looking discussion, we put this on at the request of Lorraine after we had a discussion about this whole subject, and because Mr. Murphy is out of town, could not attend, he asked me to put it off for two weeks, discussing that with the town manager, that was fine, but we still wanted to discuss possible special counsel, since we have it on here. Go ahead, Lorraine, you take it, because you...
I just was, wanted to talk to the board about having special counsel take a look at this as it comes forward, where, you know, there is potential involvement with our stadium lease and, you know, liquor license. So I wanted, what I did was actually, I went back and looked at when we did the RFPs, the names of some of the firms that came, that we did interview. Murphy, Hessie, Tumi, Lehane was one, Miara's Harrington, Blatman, Bobrowski, Coleman Page, and Deutch Williams were the ones, in addition to Gellerman Cabral, who we had interviewed. And I'm pretty sure Murphy, Hessie, Tumi, and Miara's Harrington were high up there behind Gellerman, so...
What's his name?
Harrington.
Ron, what's it, Bobrowski?
Bobrowski, yeah.
I thought he was second, I thought he was a zoning expert.
He was a zoning person, yeah. So, you know, I was just going to suggest if, if the board agrees that we could have a fresh set of eyes on this, that we ask Bob if he could inquire to whoever the board thinks. Do you remember, you remember them?
Oh, I remember them, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, my suggestion would be to consider Murphy, Hessie, Tumi, and Lehane, or Miara's Harrington is kind of how I'm remembering my preference, I guess, after...
Right, right.
But, you know, if you remember anything differently about that.
So the board would just, Lorraine, if you could circulate those names...
Okay.
And then the board can do their own, you know, background on it, and then at the next meeting, when we do have this meeting, we'll discuss that.
Okay.
Because it's obviously going to be a situation where somebody's going to pay for this, and if there's not a proposal brought forward, then we won't even have this situation. But there is, and it's going to be part of it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, I think we want to just jump back on time now, Jen. Are we really going to do goals and objectives for town manager?
Well, I think there's business going on that maybe, maybe we could just take a look at it quickly and, I mean, I was looking at them, thinking the same thing, but really, item number one that came to the top, holding department heads responsible for employee actions is really an ongoing aspect of the day-to-day operation and very important, and, you know, Bob is working on that. The new town hall, we're in the thick of it, and I imagine we'll talk more as we get to the article.
And these are all prioritized?
These are prioritized from top to bottom. Working with Water and Sewer Board to finalize effective sewer strategy, you know, that might be something that we could, I know Ginny has attended a lot of the Water and Sewer Board meetings, and I have some familiarity, we can work with Bob together and just kind of keep in touch with that in the interim. Establishing a strategy for maintenance of all town buildings and impacts, I think that would be a good, an important thing for Bob to look at, just again, as part of the whole town hall request that will be coming forward, we have to make sure that we have identified the resources that would be necessary, and I know there has been discussion, you know, Bill, you know, has started thinking about what he would need to do in terms of, you know, perhaps working that into his existing system that he has in place, which works really well for the schools. So, you know, that might be something that Bob could work on. The financial forecast, working with school committee, you know, certainly Randy...
It's been an ongoing process and, you know, Randy's worked well with the schools.
Always working on that, yeah. So, I mean, I think even if we just focused on...
Top five.
On those things, the other items further down, you know, the town asset review committee, there's just odds and ends, like the tier-two study that has to be initiated for the fire station property in the back.
You know, it's just amazing, this is all done, obviously everybody got a sheet and they filled it out, if you look at these, I mean, the number one, everybody had a five prioritizing it, the number two, everybody had a five, but one person had a four. They're all in sync, the whole board's in sync here. Would the media like a copy of this, do they already have one?
Yeah.
The goals and objectives?
We have it.
Thank you.
You might have to make a copy, copy, but it really just shows that the board really has the same concerns, you know?
Yeah, yeah. So I, you know, I think the top ones really were kind of in it right now already, so just to keep, you know, working to move those forward. When we talk about the town hall article, I think we'll have more discussion that could impact, you know, working with Bob on that, too, so.
Anybody from the board want to speak on this?
Well, just to reiterate that these rankings were all done in a vacuum, we didn't discuss these, these were all our personal rankings, and it is interesting how, you know, the top five, I think it's pretty consistent, which tells us that at least the board has a unified vision of where we want to head, and I think that's healthy. And I know that they've been ongoing, and I know they're probably not going to be solved in the next year or so, but at least it's something that we, a directive we can give to our management to say, we'd like you to work on these things. I don't think it's possible to work on them all at the same time and give them all, that just dilutes your efforts. So if we can limit them to, say, the next, the top five in the next year, I think that's enough to bite off.
Yeah, prioritize those and put the other ones in motion.
Yeah, and the other ones are, you know, if the opportunity surfaces that you can make an impact on that issue, fine.
Right.
But, you know, to try to knock, it's a paradeau shot, to try to knock the most important ones off.
So we're going to get this blown up and put right in front of Bob's desk on the wall, and we'll put some stars next to the...
It's emblazoned in my brain.
Oh, you want the job?
And just throw a little caution out there, if, you remember, a couple years ago, we had a new town manager in the board... You remember, a couple of years ago, we had a new town manager and the board came up with...
Thirty-four.
Thirty-five goals and objectives. So, day one, he got thirty-five. And you joke, you know, you're not joking, but, you know, you don't try to do them all at once.
Well, it's extremely impossible.
Kevin, under our direction, tried to do them all at once. He was meeting new people, new department heads, and he had that list. So, you know, we've whittled it down to twenty, but we're also going to have a new town manager coming on. Now, some of these things, like you look at, looking at the healthcare expense, last time that was way up at the top. And Kevin did a very good job at that. And if you look at our ratings, that's why it kind of dropped down, because it's not the high priority anymore.
It's still, it's still a priority.
It's still a priority.
It's an ongoing priority.
But the effort in the negotiations and the new mass law that came in took a lot of townspeople's time, in the staff, to try to come up with new policies and buy-in. So, that's not as critical. Town hall was down a little bit, now it's critical, so it's coming up. We're very familiar with this, Bob's very familiar with this, the staff is, but the new town manager, it's going to hit them like a ton of bricks coming in if we say these are the goals and objectives. So, just a little caution that there's going to be a little bit more of a grace period than last time.
But also, this document should be part of the information that we give to the Collins group, so that they're aware of what...
For people that have expertise in these areas.
That guy can go, "I'm out of here." Go, stay where I am. Okay, all right, so we don't need to vote on this or nothing, we're just moving forward. Okay, special town meeting warrant, I want to try and catch up here a little bit, we're fifteen minutes behind. So, let's get that out. And anybody that wants to come in front of those mics, they may do it anytime.
Just as an update, Mark, this has been sent out for vetting to town council, has been some minor changes, those will get updated to you. So essentially, what you're seeing here is what you guys have already looked at and have approved as the seven articles that are going to go forward with minor adjustments from a legal perspective.
And the date is certainly set, the fourth, we set that last meeting?
It's set in stone.
November fourth?
There's actually the signature page for you to sign so that when it is all done, Sandra can get the warrant outposted properly, so in the signature folder, have you, actually in the other folder there.
Actually, there were some changes on the planning board articles?
Right, they're all going to change in a minor form.
No, I mean, this incorporates the changes from the, from the hearing?
I think those just came through, so...
Yeah, no, they did, yeah. But this reflects those changes.
But there's some additional minor legal changes.
...added one short phrase, but it's article the planning board voted with the town council's short phrase, so yes, it's fine.
And thank you for putting the draft number and the date, that helps.
Okay. Any more discussion on this? Anybody in the audience, anybody on the board?
I just wanted to talk about Article III, the town hall plans, as part of bringing this forward. You know, I understand there, there has been an interview posted on Foxborough Cable Access, providing Dick Heidecker's viewpoint on this proposal. And I was going to suggest that there be an interview that, if we could have a couple of volunteers, I'd love to volunteer Jim and John, to...
Rebuttal?
Yeah, provide, you know, the perspective that we bring to this request and, you know, perhaps have Bill Yukna, Randy Scollins for finance, have, you know, the four of you there.
Bill Casper has volunteered to do that, and I believe Bill Yukna would probably be willing to...
Yeah, that's what you need. You don't need a board member on it. I mean, those are the two pros, and, you know...
Well, I would like to have members of the board, because this is, you know, we're bringing this forward.
As an article.
Yeah, so, I think that would really give, you know, us an opportunity to be able to explain why we're here and what our plans are, how we plan on potentially financing this, you know, to try and answer all those questions.
That's the missing piece of the puzzle.
How, well, not so much, but how we've looked at lease options and the post office and all those different other options, and so why we are going, recommending the route that we're going, and...
It'll be a four-part show, if you go through the whole two years of history here. I said, "Well, I'll take a..."
Depends on how much Mr. Hickey talks.
Who said Bob was going to be on his own show?
You're going to take it over. So, that was just one thought, and...
I'll reach out to Bob. You already say you have Bill Casper?
Bill Casper said he would do it.
Yeah, but actually, Bob called me over the weekend and asked, and he initially said, you know, the selectmen, and I said the same thing that you said, it really needs to come from, some of the voice and the information needs to come from the permanent building committee. A lot of the stuff, we can reiterate what they're saying, but they've done the studies and the numbers and the function. But I think somebody needs to be there from the selectmen, because this, this table is the advocacy group to push this forward. If we believe in it, we need to, we need to sell it, just like all the other groups did for the other projects, so... But critical is the permanent building committee with the graphics and the studies and the Castle Boos. You know, keep it simple, and I did see the one that, on cable access, very simple. You know, these are the points, this is why we think it's, now is the time. And these are the options that we've looked at, and this is the merit that different options have and don't have. But this is not going to fly unless it's a collective group that can stand behind it, and I think it has to start from this table.
Well, you're the engineer.
I'll work with John and we'll figure out, I'm just worried about schedule, when he can do it.
Well, there is, there is value. We did have a meeting, and I think we publicly discussed how we arrived at our position. And I think if it was in conjunction with sort of another overview of the plan, you know, I was late to arrive at agreeing to this, because there was a lot of other information to digest. And, you know, I said reluctantly, I really don't like tearing down buildings that are reasonably sound, but at the end of the day, the information presented, and I think it was presented in that same format, you've got to just digest information and say, "Based on what I know now, I think I can make a decision on which way to go." And sort of, you know, relive what we went through, I think, two or three weeks ago, and how we came to a decision to move forward with a new building, as difficult as it was.
Yeah.
It's been a long process.
I was also going to suggest if we could have Castle Boos come back and do the full presentation that we had originally been given when we first voted unanimously to go this decision route, again, to provide the information to the public, so they can see it fresh from that perspective, because that's a little more detail.
We could just re, have cable rerun that same meeting, instead of having them come back. We could just have, they have the meeting on file, cut out everything else and piggyback the show prior to or afterwards for, you know, the presentation by James and possibly John and the committee.
Well, let's, I think we need to figure it out offline, off-table here, because some of the stuff that Castle Boos has, a lot of detail and square footage and stuff that you're not even going to see on PowerPoint, and it's very lengthy.
Right.
So, I think we just got to grab the pertinent points and summarize it and have the people discuss it.
All right, anything else?
One thing, I'd ask Randy's indulgence for one second, if he could come up and talk about the money part of this article, because that's one of the items we're hearing through AdCom members, that they're seeing on the blogs and hearing from people on the street, "Why do you need $550,000 to do a set of plans?" And just so that everybody understands that this is a normal process, the same process they went through on the high school, on the library, there's a certain percentage per the cost of the building, that's how they derive a number, so if you could just explain that.
Mr. Yukna is the one who's managed these processes for the town for the last several years, managed it quite well, and he's explained to me that typically it's somewhere around 10% of the construction cost. And I believe the estimates on that are, you know, in the neighborhood of $5 million. It's not a dollar amount that is necessarily going to be fully expended, the $550,000 is going to have to be competitively bid. And the last time around, we received ten bids. We had a subcommittee that thoroughly went through and reviewed all the proposals and ranked them all. We had, I think, the top three or four finalists come in for interviews with the committee to whittle it down. That was the initial work that KBA had done for a much smaller amount. But this one here, obviously, given the price tag, you know, we'll go through a similar process. And the funding here is, is in a stabilization account, so it's not, you know, we don't have to borrow, you know, at this point in time. I think it's, it's interesting just to draw some comparisons to the other projects that Bob just referenced, you know, the latest major building projects that we've done. Those were not two-step processes, those were single-step. The projects went to the ballot box and town meeting, you know, within the same annual town meeting cycle, or I think that the Public Safety Building was maybe a special. And the, the whole program, the whole project was voted on at one time, including the soft costs. So, here, what we're striving so hard to do is to get the, just get the funding for the soft costs, so that when we get to town meeting in May, assuming that this is approved, and assuming that the work can be done in the, in the six-month timeframe that we would have, that the townspeople would know exactly what the bids are, because we're trying to sync the bidding of the work around the town meeting. You've got 30 days to award, award the bid. So, when we go, it's not, it's not a question mark anymore. And I know early on in the process, there's been a lot of questions about, well, you know, we don't know what it's really going to cost, but we will know what it's really going to cost, assuming we can get this article voted in the affirmative in November.
Randy, well, I got you. The biggest concern people have said to me, and I think give a credit to the editorial a couple of weeks ago, the feeling is if you vote on the 550, then you're voting on the building, and that that's coming. And they're wondering what the finance plan was at, because I brought out that you had explained to Bob that there'd be some debt exclusion involved, and they're just wondering to what extent, or do you have any idea?
Sure. The, the short answer is that the sixth proposal at this point in time, in terms of funding, is, is going to be all debt. No looking to sell other properties or to ask the board to change the policy on the meals tax, to include debt financing. It's all debt, it's going to be straightforward and simple. And the only question is, is how much of it can be included, meaning without having to, you know, raise taxes, so within the operating budget, because as you know, we've created some capacity over the last two years where we didn't have to levy to the limit to four, to the tune of $400,000 plus, and the state aid has, you know, come in higher than planned, net of the snow and ice deficit, another $150,000. So, there's some capacity going in. And then, but I've got some detailed forecasting work to do, finalize free cash, we need to get our, this year's new growth certified, which is a big incremental component to our taxes, the assessors office is working on that right now, and then finish a very detailed revenue forecast for the next three years out. And then, Bill Yukna and I are both independently looking to forecast out all of the budgets, myself on the municipal side and Bill on the school side, you know, as, you know, best estimates at this point in time before the budgeting process even starts for the next three years, which is in essence what we've done in the past. So, when, once that's all rolled up, which I'm hoping to have that done by the end of this month, at that point, I'll be able to show how much looks like it fits within included debt within the operating budget, and therefore, how much would, you know, stick out and would need a debt exclusion. You know, without having all the pieces pulled together at this point, I'm thinking the debt exclusion may be in the range of a million or two, you know, something like that. You don't want to put so much within the, within the operating budget where it stresses out the ability to, you know, to maintain the services. But I do believe that there's some capacity in there to absorb the majority of the debt service.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Randy, or anybody over there?
Can I make a comment? I'd just like to make a suggestion. If we're going to ask the townspeople to put money to do something to this building, and anybody who works in the building or has spent much time, has seen the condition of town hall, but the average citizen really has not seen the condition of town hall. So, what I'd like to do is make a suggestion that maybe we have like an open house scheduled for the evenings before, so that you can actually, people can actually come in and see what town hall looks like. Ask questions, maybe see what the, what the plans are for the future. But anyway, just see the condition of town hall, and I think...
And there'll be no staging?
No, no staging.
Don't have to.
You don't have to.
I'm kidding.
You don't have to.
You know, it's a very good, very good point. You know what, the time to do it would probably be prior, just prior to the town meeting.
But, I mean, the residents, they can come in, I mean, they're in, you know, all day long, they can come in any time, and I'm sure anybody on staff would be more than happy to show them, you know, certainly their space and pass them around, so they can see all the space.
But it'd be easier if it were open at night, because people work during the day.
Tuesday night, it's open till eight, so they can, you know, I mean...
And I invite people to come down and see, see what we're talking about.
Somebody wants to tour it on a weekend, I'd be happy to guide them.
We all have keys. I actually had a call last night trying to, from a young lady in Foxborough, asking why we weren't doing this, this, and I said, "All that's been vetted over the last few years." Talked to her for about a half hour on the phone. At the beginning, she was angry with me. At the end, she was very satisfied that I took the time to talk to her and explain the whole detail. And she goes, "Oh." And she thought that we could buy the, the post office right now and renovate it right now, it's not even for sale, and I can go on and on and on. But he says valuable for the post office right now, I mean, it's 6.2?
So, I think it's five, two, between five and six.
Okay, so, I mean, just, it's the same ballpark. We've vetted all the issues, we've vetted this way, that way, we're trying to move forward with this idea, and hopefully, town will support it. Anything else to add, John, anybody?
Do you have any idea when you're going to have that sort of in a package that can be presented? Let's say 17th. I'm hoping by the end of this month, you know, no later than the first week in October. It's a, it's a fair amount of work, and I'm actually still waiting for some pieces to fall together.
Well, no, no watching football.
Actually, didn't see the Patriots game this week.
Neither did I, so...
You didn't miss much.
I fell asleep. Anybody else? All right, moving on, thank you. The boards, I'd like to have a discussion on the Plainridge Resino Committee. I see Stephanie and Michael.
I'm just going to be, it's going to come up and speak.
All three of you.
Apparently, they're coming up anyway.
Just as a little introduction, Mark, as you know, we all believe that the Plainridge proposal was dead in the water, and then we find that Penn National has agreed to step in, and they're actually going to be considered as the proposal for the Plainridge Resino. And I have received a call from a gentleman by the name of Alex Stolus, who is working with Penn National, and a meeting with him tomorrow at 3:30, and would ask that one or two of the members join in on that meeting, if someone's around tomorrow afternoon. They're going to meet with us and tell us what, what they plan to do with the project and, you know, how they might be willing to help the town. I've also reached out to all the town managers, have talked to two of them directly, and I'm waiting to hear back from a couple of them, as to what other area towns, North Attarow, Northwalk, Rentham, and I understand that Mansfield also has been considered a surrounding community, what, what they're doing and what their concerns are. So, when I meet with this gentleman, I'm going to touch back with some of the other managers, and we may have a joint meeting to come up with a plan for a regional, what items we'd like to see resolved regionally. So, that's where we're at from our perspective. And I know that Jim sent a letter to John Ziemba, who is the spudsman for the project, the gaming commission, and I've got a call in to him, I have not heard back from him.
So, this meeting is tomorrow at town hall, Foxborough?
Yes, yeah.
Your office?
I believe it's 3:30, yeah.
Is there anybody to get that away? Jim, sounds like you're going?
I'll let you know sometime around noon, because we're, we're actually doing a walk around in the morning, so it's half my day already.
And just, we're not presenting, we're not giving our opinion, we're just here to listen to what they have to...
Right.
Bring to us.
They do have a short window, they're hoping to have an agreement in place. I believe their deadline is October 4th.
That's correct.
And then, there's some additional timeframe in which we can negotiate an agreement with them. And this is the process that I'm trying to understand from Mr. Ziemba. And I'm going to reach out back to him tomorrow. I haven't heard back, but we, we've played phone tag.
Okay, and you guys have already scheduled something for the board tomorrow?
Right.
Okay, and so I'll try and join Jim with this one?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you want, that way...
I should be... I should be right around there, close.
Yeah. I think two is all we can have.
Yeah. So if somebody wants to bump me, I don't care.
No, like I said, I'd have to clear my afternoon schedule, it's going to be difficult to do.
I mean, if you can't make it, I can be around, I'll be home.
So why don't we touch base around 1:00 and see what's going on?
Well, no, I've got an appointment, then, but I'll be home by...
I mean, by phone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. 2:00, then we'll touch base, see who's going to make it.
I'm actually going to try to move the meeting up till 3:00, because I, when I made it...
You're really pushing.
I thought I had a 4:30 appointment, realized that it's 4:00, so I'm going to try to move it up to 3:00, so I have enough time to meet with him.
Yeah.
Will someone from the Racino Committee be there?
I can make it at 3:30.
How do you get there by 3:15?
Well, let's see it, Mr. Cutler, is that something you prefer?
That's fine, I don't mind if they're there. I'm glad they're here tonight to get their perspective. I'd already talked to Mike last week, and he sent me their comments, so, which they're going to tell us tonight.
Okay. All right, who wants to go?
I'll go. Clearly, in the last two weeks, two events have occurred, which has restarted the Plainridge Racino proposal. After losing Elton Tewksbury, Penn National came in and offered to buy the Plainridge facility, and the Mass Gaming Commission allowed the host community agreement to be transferred to Penn National. Both of those have then allowed Penn National to be basically Plainridge back in the race, to, no pun intended. There was a meeting, I believe a week and a half ago, that the Penn National people presented their proposals. I was at that meeting, and I did introduce myself to the Penn National people at the time. The Orway people, the previous owners and run, and the people who ran Penn National had fully briefed, or Plainridge, excuse me, had fully briefed Penn National on who we were and what our concerns were. So they knew who I was when I got up to speak. And as we suspected, they're going to want pretty quickly to sort of cement the surrounding community agreements. I don't believe our position has changed on the impacts on this town. The main impact, as presented by the, demonstrated by the studies that Plainville did, is it will be, will be the social impacts. You can expect a 5% increase in problem gambling upon the opening of the casino, and that will eventually decrease over time to about 3%, where it resides apparently in the, in the community. We felt pretty strongly on the committee that there should be some mitigation in place prior to the, prior to this opening, and, you know, we feel pretty strongly that it should be more of a, an area-based versus, okay, Foxborough has one guy that, you know, deals with it, that's more area-based, because, you know, it's going to affect clearly Plainville, North Attleboro, Mansfield, Rantham. So it should be, you know, more or less spread throughout the Norfolk, Northern Bristol County, Norfolk County region. We didn't feel there was any really other strong impacts. Yeah, there's going to be some traffic impact. The problem you have is there's a lot of development going on there, and, you know, that's going to be masked by the other development. The joke I make is if you really wanted to have a traffic impact to the town of Foxborough, you bulldoze Plainridge, and you put up a Super Walmart. You know, the traffic studies show that the Target and the Lowes attract more car traffic than Plainridge would.
Mike, I can just interrupt you one more second there, but they don't have a liquor license.
That's true. That's true, but still, it's a fairly, it's a fairly modest facility. And as I pointed out to Mr. Cutler, if they, if they just open a bar, like they intend to, then it's a bar. And to be perfectly honest, Mark, the 800-pound gorilla for liquor licenses is in our town. And we have, we have to acknowledge that. You know, if they're serving drinks 24/7, that's a different issue, because clearly, and I swear to God, unrelated to most of them, the people who will be drinking at 3:00 in the morning on a Tuesday in March are probably related to, so that's when you'd have an issue. But I think if it's just a normally regulated alcoholic facility, it would be like any other bar or establishment, irregardless of the gaming that goes on there. The differences between the Plainridge, the original Plainridge proposal and the new Plainridge proposal is, there appears to be some form of entertainment. They're going to do it, like they said, a small stage for local bands, and they're thinking of putting a 150-room hotel. That is a slightly bigger infrastructure impact, but we still, you know, and that needs to be somewhat evaluated. And it has both its pros and cons. As far as the alcohol, if you follow the Mike Davidson theory of drinking, if they have a hotel there, you can fall down and stay down. And that was intended to be funny, but apparently, you're a very tough audience.
No, I thought it was funny. I was kind of picturing it.
Yeah, it's not pretty. So, you know, there will be some, it's slightly, it's a slightly bigger impact, but, and I'll be honest with you, the original, my opinion of the original Plainridge proposal was an extraordinarily modest proposal. And this is a little less modest, but it's still fairly, you know, as far as, again, traffic and that kind of thing, fairly small. It's fairly well situated. The impacts, you know, to the side roads are mostly because, you know, if you want my opinion, the side roads, some of the side roads leading to it are basically paved-over-cow paths from the Revolutionary War. And that's part of the issue. And, you know, again, if you go down Spruce Street, the Bridget Miramichi does form a choke point, since it's a single lane. But that's in Plainville's control, so there's not a whole lot we can do about it. And we feel there'd be really no other impacts. Again, the outlier would be if they served drinks 24/7, that that would be somewhat of a change.
What about property values, Mike? Anybody look into that?
We really don't think there's going to be an issue with property values. We haven't looked into it deeply. The people on the committee who live down there pointed out that there used to be a dump or a...
Yeah, there was.
A transfer facility, and it didn't seem to really impact their facilities. Furthermore, the facility itself is shielded enough from, from the town of Foxborough. You get, so you can hear some of the noise from the races, but that's about it. There's no light pollution, there's really no good access to it from the towns, the parts of Foxborough that have bought it. Penn National seems to be fairly aggressive, and the people who do buy the property, and they are going to talk to them directly, I got that from the meeting, but it didn't seem to be, nobody seemed to worry about property values.
Well, and I would say that there is some differences of opinion, I think, within the committee itself regarding what the, what some of the impacts are going to be. With property values, Mike is right, we never really dug into it, but you'll know from, you know, the experience that we had in Foxborough 18 months ago, or whatever, that people were extremely concerned about, about property values, and there were some instances where, where, you know, there was a big decrease in property values. I think one of the, one of the things that we relied on, frankly, because we didn't have any funding to do any studies ourselves, was the work that the town of Plainville had commissioned to have done when Our Way, the former applicant, had, had applied. And so they did a fair amount of research, they came back with, you know, some significant reports that highlighted what some of the impacts in the area would be. And as Mike said, you know, kind of the social problem of gaming was, was one of the things that they really highlighted. Now, one of the key differences is, you know, Our Way was a small local company that was run really by, you know, some folks in Plainville. Penn National is a billion, you know, four, four or five billion dollar company, you know, is located down in, I forget, Florida or someplace else.
It's there in Pennsylvania.
It's Pennsylvania, you know, they're not local people. And what we know about casinos is that what typically happens is they start small and they get bigger over time. And so I think one of the big fears that, that at least some of us on the committee have is that, you know, while this initial proposal is modest, in fact, it's, you know, in some respects, just that the proposal that was presented by Our Way, plus a hotel, plus some entertainment, it will undoubtedly get bigger over time if, in fact, they are granted the application. So, so, you know, I think that while the initial impact might be, might be not that great over time, there is the possibility that there will be significant impact, and as such, we need to try to mitigate accordingly.
The problem, I have to disagree with you a little bit, Stephanie. I agree that there may be growth in that facility. However, the law currently stipulates they're allowed 1,250 gaming, 1,250 slot machines, excuse me, no gaming tables, and, and, you know, clearly, the horse racing and the paramatchual betting. There would have to be a change in the state law in order to allow that. When and if that time occurs, I cannot say. And I, and again, I try to keep my committee from sort of speculating what's going to happen in the future, because my ability to read the future is fairly poor. I understand the concerns that are brought up, the fact that this could be a bigger deal, but there's a number of different shred-outs of what could happen in the future to Plainridge, ranging from it could turn into a big deal to it could fail because it's 11 miles from another facility. So we didn't focus on that. And I think it would be, it's my personal opinion, it'd be reckless speculation to do so at this time.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Because it sounds, and we could probably talk for another hour on this, going back and forth. You know, the Mass Gaming Commission came up with rules and regulations, and they basically, in effect, say that there is going to be impact. I mean, there's...
Yes, that is correct.
There's no doubt. It's kind of like the, you know, the cigarette company saying we can sell the cigarettes, but they won't get to put money into cancer research. It's similar thing, there's mitigation, studies, and there's going to be impact. I think what our job right now is, is similar to what we did in the past, is follow the Gaming Commission rules. Back in July, we sent a letter to the establishment that says, we believe we're going to be an impacted community, and it needs to be recognized. I think that's the first step that we need to do from this board. We've made, we've sent two letters before. I think we got a vote to send another one from council over to Penn National, that says, according to the Gaming Commission's statute, because we're in, change the date, change the name, in this exact same letter. And then, you know, it's easier to say, well, you know, we can use other people's studies. Plainville did, they spent money, they got studies, and basically, they said, look, there is going to be an impact, and we're within that radius. So that's a starting point. But let's sit tomorrow with Penn National through town manager and reserve our comments until we hear what they're going to do and hear what their proposal is. You know, the previous applicant basically sent us a letter back that said, with all due respect, we don't consider you an impacted community, and by the way, you know, thank us for all the business we're going to be bringing to the area. Penn National could say something differently, or they could say the same thing. So we'll attend the meeting tomorrow with Penn National. Bob's already reaching out to the other town managers to see what they're doing. And, yeah, I'm just afraid that we're going to get into a debate tonight. You guys have kind of caught on short order, because you were almost dismantled until this came back, you know, within a few weeks.
We were put on the back burner. I wouldn't say dismantled, we were enjoying our Tuesday nights.
Mm-hmm. So now it's in, so, you know, maybe the first thing is entertain a motion to have town council draft a similar letter as we did before, and then we'll see where that goes.
I'll second that. Was in favor? I was waiting for this discussion. I had to consider Jimmy's motion, that was the motion. So, and then the second thing, James?
Just wait.
Just follow up with tomorrow's meeting, and thank you, Guy. I know you...
Just a question.
Spent a lot of time on this.
Jim, you've been the closest. I mean, is that all we have in our quiver to let us participate in this process?
The way it's set up is, the applicant comes in, and then they have to look at what the impacts, and, you know, lighting, traffic, noise, whatever. Here, I think it's going to come down to social gambling over. You know, you've got to remember, this is, there's only one that's allowed in the state, and it's going to be either here or...
Rainham is...
Rainham or Rainham.
I have something here, John, I had, I had taken copies of, it's just showing the things about surrounding towns, who's eligible and things like that.
Go ahead, James.
So if we sit with the applicant, and they recognize that we are an impacted community, and we can figure out what the impact is, and we come to some agreement, then we're kind of on board with the proposal. If we're at odds, they make their application, it goes to the Gaming Commission to vote for it. They're going to have different applicants, they're going to look at the whole picture, and...
But could there ever be a time where we and the applicant throughout the gaming board arguing our positions?
Yeah, and that's when the Gaming Commission takes over.
That's what I gave you.
I was just looking to see where the mechanisms can go.
Basically, they're going to mitigate it. They said they've heard both sides, and this is their finding, and that is what it is.
Absolutely. If I was to speculate, I'd say Penn National would probably want to settle pretty quickly. The people in Rainham have, have been aggressive about reaching out to the surrounding communities, and they're, they're the main competitor for the people down in Plainville.
And all that said, though, you still have that...
Okay, thanks.
The differences of agreement between not just town, but I took a ride out to Ashland this weekend to see my aunt, okay? I saw more no casino signs, Medway, Paulston, every other town that's had to deal with this, Framham, or being close to, and Bellingham. You know, this has become an issue in every community. And here we is, we thought we had it gone, our own, then we thought it was gone again. Here it comes, it's like a plague, and here it comes back. It comes down to, you know, is, do people want it in their communities or near their communities? And that's, when you, do we, do you start fighting? Do you hit the streets, picketing? I mean, this is something that's been close to this town for a long time, that nobody, you know, 70% of this town, my, my perspective, didn't want this. Now you've got Plainville that does want it, and, you know, but I was going to meet with the other town managers, their townspeople probably might want it, don't want it, I'm not sure. I know Walpole wanted nothing to do with a casino. What they call a casino or race engine, Racino, it's still gambling, it's still in your communities, and it's going to affect your children, it's going to affect everybody. So this is a major problem. So after we meet with Penn Central, I'm not sitting there saying, you know what, I'm here to mitigate. I'm here saying, go away.
But Mark...
The problem you have, Mr. Sullivan, is, is the way the law is written, that the town itself can determine their own future, and the surrounding communities do not have a say in that.
And this was always a concern, that this would happen to Foxborough, we didn't take the proposal sent to Foxborough, and here it is laid at our plate. And the thing is, you know what, it all comes down to, is the legislation that voted for this, remember that when you go to the polls again, okay? That's my opinion.
Hey, Mark, there is a, there is a group of repeal the deal folks who are out there trying to, to get, you know, this, this issue back on the ballot, so, but...
The only situation is, if I'm correct, that they budgeted the money for the future forecast, and, you know, so, I mean, this is just a bad situation.
But I mean, that's, that's the way Massachusetts, as you look at, I mean, we're dealing, it's coming to Plainville, because Tewksbury said no, so they picked up and they went to Plainville. Tewksbury and Plainville are very different. Same night that Plainville said yes, West Springfield said no to a casino. So they're kind of jumping around to find, and it's taken, it's taken a lot longer than the Mass Gaming Commission anticipated, and there's a lot more anxiety than anyone anticipated. But you're right, the town, the state initiated, it took years, the state voted for it, and we're dealing with it.
They're putting it on every municipality in the Commonwealth, and it's just not right.
You know what bothered me about the Penn National? They had applied without a location, they never had a location when they applied.
That's the way that the Gaming Commission set it up. It's qualifications first.
I know, but that, that just never seemed right to me. And so they tried to go to Tewksbury, Tewksbury said no. So they come into Plainridge, Plainridge said yes.
And let them shop it.
They were shot it.
Yeah.
And that just, that just didn't seem right.
It's the way the law's written, ma'am. I mean...
The legislator's voted for it.
I know.
There's, you know, there's...
It's a money stream. All it is, is a money stream.
Yep.
Well, that's the way the law's written. Well, it's the way the law's written and you have to, you know, we live in a representative government and you, as Mr. Sullivan pointed out, we can either vote him out of office or we deal with the consequences.
Or both.
So, I, I can't, you know, I, I, as, as I told my committee and, and as I base, you know, I base it on, on the work I do, is we work from the accident backwards. We assume that it was coming to Plain, Plainville, that's the worst case scenario, and then we go for the mitigation there. Um, you know, I, I, in, in order to scope it, we had to, you know, we had to say, okay, this is, you know, this is what it's being proposed as, you know, it's a 1,250 slot machines, no tables, that kind of thing, and we just kept it at that, mostly because, you know, you'd spend all your time speculating on what would be, on what could be, and, and we needed to, you know, get to, to, to get to it. I mean, Stephanie's correct in that, yeah, if it grows bigger, we've got a bigger problem, but again, I, I don't know that's going to happen.
What doesn't grow? Have you seen any company around here that hasn't grown up on Route One, Michael? I mean, they expand, it's about making money. When people own property, they, that they can, you know, uh, zone for what they can do and, and produce a, you know, an entertainment facility that's with this town, who all voted to have, have at Patriots Place, to have, you know, first the stadium, it was just a stadium, then it grew to a new stadium, and then it grew to what is now Patriots Place, which they're looking to expand on even more. Everything expands. Your own house expands, you know, so you can only expect it. And, and as far as the legislatures go, they can vote on, on it again at a later time. It's just, you know what?
It's easier.
It's not what I signed up for as a father raising children in the town of Foxborough. And here we go again, you know? And it's not even about town versus town, it's about what's right for the surrounding communities in the community where it's in. And I just, that's my opinion. And I don't think anybody on this board shares a different one. So, if we have to start kicking, we're going to start kicking. That's my opinion, so
But you have to do it the right way. You won't, don't want to go in as hot sauce. You want to go in as honey.
I love seeing you be upset, Jim, but come on.
I know, but you want to go in sweet.
The, the, the thing, the thing is, is, you know, again, the, the, the host community where this is located has, it's their right to self-determination. Um, and that's the way the law's written and, and I, you know, I have to respect that. I may not agree with it, but I have to respect that that's their right to self-determination and that town of Plainville very much wants this, uh, for a variety of reasons. Um, I, what we can do from our perspective, you know, from a man who sits on a, a town commit board, I don't know as much I can do. As a private citizen, yeah, I could probably do a little bit more. Um, but I don't, you know, the way the law's written, it's, it's, you can't have it so the surrounding community can, you know, decide against it. And Plainville does have a few valid points, folks, that the 800-pound gorilla in the region isn't going to be Plainridge, it's down, it's on Route One in Foxborough.
It's not 24/7.
I know it's not 24/7.
No, you know, there's a comparison to a point, Michael, that, yeah, it is definitely something that the surrounding towns didn't get much mitigation for, but then if you go back in history, that stadium was offered to be built in Walpole before it was built in Foxborough and other towns surrounding here. But that's going back in history. What I'm saying to you is to compare a gaming facility to an NFL stadium is not apples to apples. It's a world apart. You just can't do it, and I'm going to respectfully disagree with that. And I just think that this is not what people signed up for. And I think it's time to move on because we've got a lot of other business. Do anybody else want to add anything before we go? All right, so Jim, you and Ginny, or you and I, we'll meet with Bob tomorrow and you
Bob, I will make my best effort to be there
Sure.
By 3:30. I mean, I get out of work at 2:30, so it takes me about an hour to get home.
I'll see if I can get out a few minutes early. In, in your office?
Yeah, we, probably in the gala room or
I can take Sharon out of order.
Oh, yeah, I'm, okay.
All right, Stan.
Thank you.
All right, so we can go to action. Sharon, I apologize, I, I wish I'd, I'd recognize you earlier so that we could get you out of here. You know, if you ever have an issue where you need to be somewhere or not feeling well, anybody that comes from this board
Yeah, I've got a cold.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You can stay down there. If anybody ever has an issue where they have to be
I've got a whole book
You know, um, not feeling well, come from this board, or has someplace else another engagement Please bring it to the chairman or the vice chair, any of the board members' attention so we can move you out further, up further. Okay, so Action.
Sharon.
Okay, ready, John, for action?
Is Sharon coming up to talk to us?
Well, not too close, she's got a vicious cold. Here we, I found it.
I brought some books, you know, my, my electronic readings.
Michael.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. Lorraine probably knows much more about this than I do. There has been a billboard advisory committee meeting over the end of the summer. They've held, I believe, four meetings or five meetings, Lorraine? Two. And I attended both of them. Wasn't I lucky?
Yes.
Uh, and we looked at the applications before the ZBA. We did a lot of work with the bylaw. Uh, Mr. Casper shared the difficulties in administering the current bylaw. And the recommendation of that committee was that we need a whole new 21st century sign bylaw. What we have now is moved from the zoning bylaw to the general bylaws with no, um, adjustment. So, there's zoning language and zoning districts that are undefined in the general bylaws. Uh, it references a number of things that were changed during the zoning bylaw codification, the language still exists in the general bylaws. So, it just, the bylaw itself needs to be updated. Uh, there are types of signs which were not even anticipated in 1995 when it made its migration from zoning to general bylaws. So, we need to figure out how we handle all this new technology and new types of sign. Uh, like this previous discussion, what do the people of Foxborough want? What are they comfortable with? We all know there are opportunities with, uh, monies from certain types of billboards, but is that the vision that, that the business community and the residents of this town have for the kind of quality business environment that we're going to project? Uh, the recommendation of the billboard advisory committee is that, uh, there is an economic development fund, which was funded with, uh, monies, uh, some seven years ago, I believe. Uh, Randy notes that the current balance of the fund is $49,566. Uh, to use these funds requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen. At the request of Ms. Brew, I contacted three very senior planners and asked them how much it would be to develop a new bylaw and include a public participation component where we talked to business people on Route One, business people in the center, people who operate businesses in other parts of town, and talked to residents to see what their, their vision is, for lack of better words, concerning signs. Our goal would be to have that ready for an annual town meeting in May, which means it has to be done and ready much earlier in the spring. Um, it's tight, but doable. Um, the estimate I got was in the $20,000 range or so. Um, the, uh, I would request that these monies be used. Signage, of course, is integral to the entire economic development of a community. Uh, it's how you find stuff, it, it tells you what kind of businesses you have and sends a message about what the local business climate is. Uh, so we thought this was a reasonable fund to use to, uh, fund the sign bylaw update. And I apologize, my spell check changed, Bob Garber's name to Gardner. But then again, it still thinks I'm Sharon Watson, so
Yeah, right.
Sharon, just a question, you're, you're
Yes.
I, I understand that the current bylaws, it's mismatched in a lot of places, but, um, you, you said you were going to try to solicit input from the community onto, you know, what their vision of the town is.
Right.
You know, my, my opinion of signage is, uh, it can become blight in a hurry, but it could also, if it's done in an understated way, can actually add value to your community.
And we talked about
Is that, is it, that's the kind of question you're trying to get
And we talked about incentivizing creativity and, and rewarding, uh, better signs by letting them be a little larger or something, and trying to come up with, instead of just the stick, but some carrots, so
For instance, our, our town common is now blight because we didn't regulate what the state could do with signs.
Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that's where you're going with this, is try to make, make the community look better at the same time letting business promote their, the business and their products.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
And that, that is the goal, that, that we want to enable businesses to get the message out, to let people know where they are. Um, the first or second time you go somewhere, you need the sign to know where it is. Then you know how to get there, and it's just telling you, this is a nice place to come and do business, or this is, you know, the, uh, used goods store where anything goes or whatever. But, um, the sign, once you've found it a few times, you're no longer using it for location, it's then kind of projecting something about the business.
But the use of these funds is for what? Is this to pay consultants or pay, um, how, how the funds are going to be used to
The funds are
Get to the, to get to the warrant article?
The funds would be used, um, with the approval of this board, to retain, uh, a team of, um, consultants who would draft the bylaw, meet with the business community, talk to residents, um, be able to make presentations on the bylaw to the appropriate boards and get it ready in a timely fashion for town, town meeting in May.
Sharon, also, when we met last time, we were talking about, um, how the master planning process could be used to interface with
Right. We're in the process of developing the scope for the final phase of the master plan. So, it's, it might be that we include several questions about signage on a follow-up survey. The coordination between those two efforts would be decided.
Sharon, when you, you know, when you're talking about signage, you're talking about individual store signs
Right.
In addition, in addition to billboards, are
Yes, yes, all, all on-premise and off-premise signs. On-premise signs, you know, Joe's Barber Shop. Um, off-premise signs are billboards and other signs on another piece of land that send you somewhere. And that's what gets to be the real clutter, whether it's green from mass highways or multiple colors from kind of ad hoc people putting up signs to send you to their yard sale, their whatever. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, I'm glad on the committee, I mean, selectmen, finance person, water and sewer, zoning board, planning, I think you put us in a position where we didn't have to say yes or no to a couple applicants that just came in and you're stepping back and looking at the master plan. Um, so, so in the long run, um, I think it's going to pay off for the, for the money that we're spending on getting consultants to look at it. Is there a mechanism, I mean, $20,000 compared to revenue that could be coming in from just the billboards is, is small in comparison, but it, it's broad for the whole town.
Well, we found that several towns charge an annual, annual licensing fee for some of their signs, and that would be something we would specifically request that the consultant investigate.
That, that's where I was getting at, taking this $20,000 and putting it back into
Right.
Application fees. So, if there's a sign granted, uh, the fee reflects the money that the town spent to get to that point.
That would require, that would require a change of, uh, the fee, the, uh, fee for a sign goes in through the building department to the general fund.
Correct, but I think the premise on fees that are paid, the town can't make money off in and for the profit, but part of the cost for the town would be this $20,000.
That's correct.
Whether it's five years before the application came in.
Right, right.
But I guess my, in, in short order, don't lose track of the money that we're spending on this because it will come back on the
Right.
During the process.
Right.
Sharon, what's the name of the, um, account that you talked to Randy about?
That's the, um
Economic Development Account.
That was earmarked money from the, uh, lodge.
Patriot Place.
Lodge, wasn't it?
I thought
From the lodge, there was a hundred and
No, that was, that was spent, this is, um, that paid for Brobrowski's work. It was my understanding, this was from the liquor license fees from Patriot Place.
That could be part of it.
And it was $60,000. Um, part of the money was used to pay for the Founder's Day banners that go around the common on the decorative light poles, and that's been the only other use of the monies.
I just want to thank Sharon for all the work that she's done for this group.
And, um, if, if requested, my board would like to make me available to help Bob to continue in the process, if that's okay with you guys.
Yes.
Motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I move that we, um, approve the, uh, use of no more than $20,000 coming from the Economic Development Fund to be used by town planner and planning.
Um, do you see the billboard advisory committee continuing, Lorraine?
Yes.
I would think it
Okay, to be used by the billboard advisory committee.
I would think so.
Uh, to update, um, the town's signed bylaws in time for the annual town meeting.
Sounds good.
Second? Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye.
Thank you, thanks very much, Sharon.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, might as well go back to the top then, John.
Thanks again.
Into, into office.
Um, okay. These are the minutes from August 20th and September 3rd. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of August 20th. I'll do them separately, the minutes of August 20th as submitted.
Second?
Any discussion? All's in favor?
I move that we accept the, um, Board of Selectmen's minutes from September 3rd, 2013, as submitted.
I just want to change my name from Mr. to Ms. Brew.
Very messy.
Page four, in the middle, right after September 11th.
Okay, so motion with those, uh, changes, I'll second that.
No, I'm
Who'll fund it?
On, um, on page five of these minutes, on paragraphs three and four, it was Bob Saitman who invited the board to the, uh, POW MIA ceremony. And then in the next line, um
Not Mr. Conley.
Not Mr. Conley. So, it's Mrs. Saitman on paragraphs three and four.
That's a good time to remind everybody that that's, uh, Friday night. POW MIA, is this Friday night?
The third, it says Mr. Conley.
Starts.
Actually, Mr. Saitman.
Yeah, I think Saturday at 4:00, right?
Yeah.
Uh, it's
Are you on the right one?
On page five of the
You on the right one?
Are you on September 3rd?
Yes.
September 3rd.
September 3rd.
I don't have it on any more, James, I think it's Saturday at 4:00.
Conley.
Yeah. Yep, it was Mr. Saitman.
The vice chair is expected to speak.
And then you got a Mr. Conley.
In the next line, sorry, the next
The vice chair is expected to make a speech.
The vice chair is going to be out of town.
Thank you.
So, John Conley wasn't the guy who was there?
No, he was the guy that we appointed.
Okay.
It was Bob Saitman.
That's what I thought.
Conley wasn't there.
But he wasn't there, so we're going to change this.
That's what you get when you're an English major, Jenny Kapova. Okay.
Yeah, we appointed John, Mr., we appointed John Conley.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, the next item is CBS Scene.
All those in favor with the men?
All right.
Five zero. Okay, go ahead.
The next item is CBS Scene has asked the Board of Selectmen to modify their, or create a license extension to open at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays during 1:00 p.m. Patriots home games. This was submitted to us by Robert Christensen, who's the general manager of CBS Scene.
The letter doesn't, the letter just says.
Sunday games.
On Sundays during the Gillette Stadium football season. It doesn't, so it should specify on days when the home games begin.
The, the letter to them will specify it.
Will specify, yeah, yeah, it's a standard. We got that letter packed for like the last few years, so I'll take that as a motion, John.
That's a motion.
Second? All's in favor?
All right.
Okay, standard.
The next item is a request to appoint Garrett Edward Riley as a cab driver for East Coast Limousine Service. And Bob, is this a, a full-time driver or is this a?
I believe, you know, the, East Coast is a limo service and most of the time they're, you know, they rotate people through, so.
So this is just another driver in their fleet?
Right.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
That license is in that folder.
Okay, yeah, we're going to give you that tonight. Okay, so we're all set, I'll then go into executive session.
Okay.
All right, so.
So, motion to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Union negotiation strategies, fire, void in the library, highway water, and review of executive session minutes, only to adjourn, to come into great.
Come out to adjourn.
Come out to adjourn.
Second. All's in favor? Roll call, James?
Yes.
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mark, yes. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
You too.